Are you ready Hector?
Ready Mayor.
So let's go ahead and call the Talent City Council Regular Meeting of August 6th to order roll call please.
Councilor Colley is not present, Councilor Panemera.
Here.
Councilor Medina.
Here.
Councilor Pestejo.
Here.
Byers.
Here.
Councilor Para Miller is not present and Mayor Ayerswood.
Here.
Mayor you have a quorum.
Thank you Hector. I am just pulling up the regular council meeting agenda really quick. There it is. Oh my gosh, you made this so much easier for me. I just can't tell you how grateful I am. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is additions and corrections to agenda. Anybody with additions or corrections? Alex?
Thank you Mayor. On item 5.2 deliberation on and first reading of ordinance 2025-989, I would also request that council consider a reading by full text. Ordinance 2025-990 is exactly the same content as proposed, but I'd like to counsel to have the opportunity to put it into effect fast. Some of the provisions go into effect faster by reading a full text version for selected items.
Very good. Any other additions or corrections? Any recusals tonight? Councilor Medina?
I have a potential conflict of interest with the Wagner Creek Road right away. Just out of an abundance of caution because it mentioned the school district. I don't know how much conversation will involve that, but just out of an abundance of caution since I work for them.
Very good. Any other? Alright. Moving on to recognitions, proclamations and community announcements. Are there any recognitions or proclamations? No? Any community announcements?
Thank you Mayor. Talent Harvest Festival is October 4th and applications for vendors are live and we are also seeking volunteers. There's information at www.talentharvestfestival.org. The Advanced Meter Infrastructure AMI Water Meter Replacement Project is ongoing. It's about half done. So if you haven't got a hanger about, a door hanger about having your water meter replaced yet, you are likely to very soon. We are of course continuing weed abatement and are moving forward with citing, approaching the point where we might cite a couple of folks who have not been responsive, but thank you to those of you who have worked with our code compliance officer on addressing those issues. Hi, on a related note, high fire danger is in effect. If you have any question about what is acceptable to do, check out swofire.com. The Talent Artisans and Growers Market is back this summer. The next date is August 22nd and that is held primarily in Old Town Park and managed by Talent Business Alliance. On their website talentbusinessalliance.org, their events page, so slash events, there's a dedicated play page at slash artisans and growers markets. And finally, a reminder to, we have regularly to sign up for Jackson Alerts if you're not already getting emergency alerts and you can do that at jacksoncountyor.gov/alerts.
Thank you. And if I could just add on to the, to the market, this market will have more farms than usual. So if we want to see and support more farmers market, more produce coming into our community, this August will be an opportunity to do that. Okay.
Mayor, and one thing that just occurred to me that we should mention, the council, council meeting on August 20th is canceled.
So. Oh yeah.
Don't show up here.
Yeah. And good to mention that early in the meeting as well. Okay, so as you know, we have a really big agenda tonight, so I'm going to be moving us along pretty quickly wherever we can. So the next item is item number four, which is public testimony. I have two speaker request forms. Hector, do we have any speaker request forms online? Okay, so I'm going to call you to the podium in the order that I've received them. You will have five minutes and will somebody will run a timer for me. I see that both of the request forms are for the same organization. So my hope is that you have a little bit different talking points. And, and then also, we do not engage in discussion of speaker request forms, but we are allowed to talk about that towards the end of the agenda, which is going to be a long night. So you may want to hear later what, what comes out of it. So with that, we're going to call Fran Fields to the podium. Please come forward and state your name and your city for the record.
My name is Fran Fields and I live in Talent.
Can I ask you to bring the mic down to you? Yeah, it bent. Just give it a good bend. There you go.
My name is Fran Fields. I live in Talent. In January this year, I volunteered to assist Callie Roberts in her effort to develop a Talent Senior Center. Together, we have coordinated with H+ City of Talent Mayor Darby and together with Tal- for Talent in support of initiatives that complement our senior connectedness goals. Since February, we have received input from community members, recruited volunteers, formed a steering committee, and scheduled various free activities. Talent is home to a steadily increasing number of older adults who make up a significant portion of the city's residents. Seniors in Talent are underserved because there are no dedicated spaces where they can come together, making it difficult to combat the growing issue of social isolation. Rogue Seniors' vision is to have a permanent location which offers a vibrant, inclusive socialization, wellness, learning and engagement. Currently, Rogue Seniors conducts two weekly outdoor activities that are open to all community members and several monthly age positive activities are held at the Talent Library. These activities are fully organized and staffed by volunteers. We also support local seniors by coordinating with other organizations, nonprofits and businesses to share information directly and by providing access to a wide variety of resources through our website. Last night, the CBS Evening News presented a segment highlighting how some homebound seniors rely on AI companions because they are unable to engage with others in person due to mobility issues or lack of engagement with them. This is increasing, there is increasing news coverage of this issue. Social isolation among local seniors was also addressed at the RV cog SAC Zoom meeting this week. A preliminary client survey revealed that 56% of those receiving home deliveries, home delivered meals, state that the volunteer is the only person they see in a given day. So Callie and I appreciate the opportunities to speak about Rogue Seniors and our interest in potential tendency in the Talent Community Resource Center. Callie will continue with more information. Thank you.
Next speaker request form is Callie Roberts. Please come forward and state your name and your city for the record.
Hi, I'm Callie Roberts and I live in Talent. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here representing Rogue Seniors, a grassroots group to support older adults in the Talent and Phoenix area. Our mission is to foster dignity, purpose and connection for seniors through social engagement, wellness programs and access to essential resources. In a short time, Rogue Seniors has grown from an idea into a thriving organization backed by strong community support as shown by our online petition, which we have 24 people that have signed, and the presence of community members that have joined us here tonight. Although we're a new organization, we are currently in the process of establishing a fiscal sponsorship with H+ which will strengthen our ability to secure funding and deliver programs that truly meets the needs of older adults in our area. H+ is deeply committed to our community as demonstrated by their investment in two low income senior housing projects that foster age positive, inclusive environments. Rogue Seniors and H+ have tremendous alignment of our missions and leveraging of resources. Their values closely align with ours and their ongoing advocacy and investment highlight their dedication to building a strong, supportive future for older adults in Talent. A small office space would give us a dedicated place to work and would allow us to continue building the infrastructure of our organization, setting up systems, coordinating volunteers, hosting planning meetings and expanding outreach to underserved seniors. This small space would help us create powerful results. In addition to my work with Rogue Seniors, I also serve as a member of the Together for Talent Committee. I believe this puts us in a unique position. Our work naturally intersects with community resilience, which is a core focus of the Talent Community Resource Center. From heat relief efforts to emergency preparedness and mutual aid, seniors are often among the most vulnerable and overlooked. Our presence would support and complement the mission of the space. We see this not just as a request for space, but as an opportunity for deeper collaboration with the City of Talent, Together for Talent and H+, a collaboration that benefits the entire community. Thank you for considering us as a partner in the shared vision.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. I'm going to read a public hearing statement. And then we'll go on to item 5.1. The City of Talent is holding this legislative hearing on proposed amendments to the City of Talent Development Code, Planning File DCA 2025-001 in accordance with Oregon Public Meeting Law as described in ORS 192.610 through 192.710. The approval criteria that apply to this legislative matter under consideration are statewide planning goals and guidelines adopted under the Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 197, including statewide planning goal 1, citizen involvement, 2, land use planning, 12, transportation. Comments from any applicable federal or state agency regarding applicable statutes or regulations including climate friendly and equitable communities, CPEC, rules under Oregon Administrative Rules 660-012, applicable intergovernment agreements. Yeah, number three, applicable intergovernment agreements. C, evidence and testimony in this hearing must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the City Zoning Code, Comprehensive Plan Subdivision Code, or other applicable land use and development related regulations. D, failure to raise an issue with sufficient clarity and detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond accordingly to the issues precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. E, any participant may request a continuance. In addition, a participant may request that the record of the proceedings remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. The council will consider whether or not they will continue the hearing or leave the record open for a specified length of time for new written testimony or evidence. F, if you wish to speak, please complete the speaker request form and provide that form to staff. Please keep your comments to the applicable criteria. Public testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Am I reading all five pages?
The, it turns into a schedule for the, for the, you're not reading all five pages at this time.
Okay, so I'm just going to go ahead and read the item that we're on then. Item 5.1. So we are on item 5.1, which is public hearings. Consideration of text amendments to the Talent Comprehensive Plan and Talent Municipal Code. The proposed changes to the Comprehensive Plan are text amendments to Element E, Economy, Policy 2, Infil-
I'm sorry, I'll just bear, the, we kept that on the notice, but the only items under consideration are the second item today, the DCA. So if, yeah, this, the script that I gave you has.
So am I adequate to hand this over to staff at this point?
I think that would be good. So Mayor, I just asked you to call the meeting to order and then I'll, I'll continue.
At this time, I'm going to open the public meeting at 7:12.
Great. So this public hearing is regarding proposed changes to the Talent Municipal Code to Chapter 18, including 1815 definitions, 1850 Central Business District Commercial Zone, 1855 Highway Central Business District Commercial Zone, 1860 Highway Commercial Zone, 1895 Residential Lot Improvement Standards, 1815 Development and Design Standards and 18155 Conditional Use Permit. So the order proceedings will be A, a disclosure if there are any statements of conflict of interest, B, the staff report, C, in correspondence, we have none to date, then D, public testimony, at which point the mayor you close the public, the public hearing and then enter deliberation. So I think at this point it would be good to, if there are any declarations of conflict of interest, that would be the next step.
I see none.
And then if he's a mayor, I'll proceed with my staff report.
Very good.
Thank you. So there were a number of recommendations that came out of the revisioning the Highway 99 Bear Creek Greenway Corridor. And I've presented a subset of those to you all tonight that have been reviewed by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended the following for adoption with no changes. One, to eliminate the additional standards that we have in our code for duplexes. This is a step that's required under one of the recent House State Bills on, to expand housing choice. The second set they suggested was to clarify the definition of craft, manufacturing and self-served, self-served storage facilities. And those were just clarifications that the consultant would add clarity. The Planning Commission recommended adopting the Group 5 Established Bear Creek Greenway Frontage Standards and Connection Requirement and Item 8 to revise street network connection requirements. They, there were some comments on Section 3, the establishing additional regulations and designs, design standards for self-storage facilities. So as opposed to the staff recommendation, Planning Commission essentially recommended that the city council consider not allowing any first floor self-storage facilities in the commercial highway zone. And the ordinance as proposed reflects that recommendation. In the Area 4, which were establishing additional regulations and design standards for automobile service stations, Planning Commission recommended adoption of those standards, but recommended that you all seek input from staff on potential legal challenges. So there is a section of your staff report that goes into some depth on the potential for legal challenges to those, to that kind of rule. I, for the purpose of my staff report at this time, I'll just jump to the bottom line and that is there's a very good precedent that supports the city's proposed approach. There's a US Fifth Circuit ruling that specifically upheld a zoning regulation that required a distance of 350 yards between gas stations and also 350 yards from a rather long list of public uses. So the Supreme, the Fifth Circuit Court and the precedent supports that kind of regulation as long as there's a clear public interest that's being served. The six set of recommendations were to establish design standards. The Planning Commission recommended some additional language to lighting to make sure that they are, what we are taking would be a dark sky compatible approach and, and to make sure that we're getting lighting that's consistent with what's already in downtown and on West Valley View. And the code amendments attached to the ordinance reflect those recommendations. There was another suggested change from Planning Commission and that has to do with orientation of development. And this is the only recommendation that, that staff thinks that really bears, well, it's not the only recommendation that staff thinks bears recommendation, further reflection. But I think there, there is some concern from staff about the position the Planning Commission took, which was essentially to require all residential and all commercial development to orient to Highway 99 with no exceptions. What staff had originally proposed would allow the style of development that for instance is at Phoenix Industrial Studios that is sort of a step towards orienting fully towards 99, but also is is also responds to what the existing environment is in some ways. The, in some places there are, you know, spots on 99 where it is, would be challenging to fully orient to 99. The, the other, the other proposed staff language would allow what's taken place at 210 North Pacific where some of the residential behind the commercial is oriented to the parking lot essentially. Where, because, well, if you're familiar with that site, the, the housing is essentially a horseshoe around the commercial. And so this, the, what the Planning Commission would require each and every one of those residential units to face the, face the street. And then the final, final set of recommendations was just to make an additional reference to the drive-through overlay. And I think I will stop there. I imagine there are questions with those, a high level view of what's in there and what Planning Commission's attitude was about those recommendations.
Any questions or comments?
So is this the only opportunity we'll have to ask questions or can we ask more questions during deliberation?
This is, this is the best opportunity to have. That's the answer.
So I'm just trying to go through to see where, where Planning Commission and, and had some changes. You explain those rate as far as which ones are, I just want you to bottom line that, that thing, which ones do, is there still disagreement between staff and planning?
I would say that staff, staff would encourage additional scrutiny of, of a couple of things. One, or maybe scrutiny or at minimum awareness of, of what council is being asked to adopt. So I think there are two, two places where the, the combination of both staff and planning commission recommendations are fairly aggressive in terms of land use regulation. And one of those is the net result of the changes to self-storage regulations would be to prohibit first floor self-storage in any zone in the city because there's only one zone currently where it's allowed. And so we would be, we would be eliminating that. I think there, I think the, the legal considerations section suggests we're on pretty good ground there, but it is, it is an aggressive step. Similarly, I think the gas station regulation to, the automobile service station regulation to prohibit automobile service stations within 2,000 feet of existing automobile service stations is an aggressive step. Again, I think, I think we're on good ground and I certainly encourage you to ask our city attorney his opinion on those. So I think those are both, I don't think there's any difference between staff and planning commission on those topics. And I think they are certainly, you know, important for, for council to, to consider the steps that we're proposing carefully. Yes, and so Dave's suggestion to me was to, the, the step, the Planning Commission supported the, and the staff had the same recommendation on the automobile service station. On the self-storage facilities, the original staff recommendation that went to Planning Commission was to allow self-storage on the first floor in that commercial highway zone as a conditional use with some fairly high design standards. So that, that's, I think, I think those are two good options to focus on if you, if you wanted to delve deep, more deeply into that. And then the final area where I think there, there was some difference of opinion between, well, I'll speak on my behalf, between my, my thoughts about these issues and the Planning Commission recommendations was that orientation question. I, I think it makes sense that Department of Land Conservation and Development is pushing us to as much as we can clear and objective standards. I think there are times where it's difficult to anticipate everything and, and we would be adopting a standard that's quite rigid, but it may be appropriate. So I would encourage you all to think strongly about that.
Council Penama?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I think I understand there's like a specific instance where that wasn't followed in that, you know, it's very much to the annoyance of the Planning Commission members. So, but if, if we were to adopt that kind of a standard, an exception like you've described, like the horseshoe or something else, they could, they, the applicant could ask for a, you know, I forget, a variance.
So yes.
Is that just, you know, just that, just a lot of trouble?
Well, so a variance arguably would be a route, but generally speaking, variances are for a degree. So if a requirement is 100 feet, you might ask for a variance of 90 feet. I think it's questionable whether this kind of standard could be, a variance could be applicable to. I think also just to be transparent, our, our variance standards are very high. It is very difficult to make the variance, the key standards being you have to prove that there's something unique about your site situation and that there's no, essentially no way to meet the code effectively. And I think it'd be good just for the record to make clear exactly what the language that was proposed and what the Planning Commission recommendation is. So this would be, this would, this is in design standards for the 99 highway. So it'd apply to any property that touches Highway 99 or has, or some portion of it is within 100 feet of Highway 99. So the piece that we're all agreed on is buildings must be oriented towards Highway 99 with a primary entrance facing the street. The original recommendation had an or clause there, or a public space visible from the street right of way. So that's, that's creating the possibility- So that's, that's creating the possibility for something similar to Phoenix Studios where their entrances aren't hidden from the street, but they're not necessarily facing the street, they're perpendicular to the street. And then there's, there's a B that planning commission recommended striking, which is in horizontal mixed-use developments where commercial and residential uses occupy different portions of a site rather than the same building. So mixed use where we've got commercial buildings and residential buildings on the same site. Commercial buildings must face Highway ninety-nine or an internal pedestrian pathway. While residential buildings may front shared open spaces or internal courtyards. So the, the original recommendation provides several flexibilities and planning commission is encouraging you not to allow any.
Can I just make a few more comments, at least representing some of the arguments that were made at the planning commission? As, as the ex officio member, I just want to relay that the concerns were that that we have examples along the highway that are not, do not have the, the entryway along the highway and the property that is referenced often has a residential building right up to the highway with the side facing. And my understanding is if they did just put an entryway on that end, it would have satisfied what they're hoping to accomplish here. And then, yeah, if I remember correctly, the proponent for this was also referencing the Phoenix Studio Building suggesting the same that if there was just an entrance at the end, that, that would satisfy the ask, the, the changes that they are suggesting to make so that as you go down the highway, you're looking at entrances, not the side of buildings or the back of buildings. I think I've relayed the concerns. I just didn't want there to be one, just one, one sign of this provided in this discussion. And those were the talking point, those were some of the talking points that I can remember being made by Chair Volkart, who was, who was the proponent of this recommendation.
Thank you, Mary. That's very helpful.
Also, some of the concerns about the storage units were based on around the number of storage units that are, the number of one-story storage units that are currently on ninety-nine. And, and that the change of the second story would require the builder to utilize that first floor for anything other than storage, office space, whatever, retail space. Just for good measure, I'll ask the legal opinion that Alex referred to earlier.
I agree with the conclusion he, he's stated in the, the staff report that what, what is proposed by staff and, and what is proposed by planning commission very likely would withstand legal scrutiny.
Any other questions? So you have the steps. What's the next step?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I probably should disclose before we open for, if there is public testimony, a couple, a couple items. One is, I did want to emphasize as we, we consistently noticed public hearings on both some comp plan amendments as that was how we originally noticed this public hearing. We're not proposing any of those comp plan amendments tonight. We will be proposing some of those in, in the future, but under a new series of public hearings. And then I think I might go into a little bit in, as you prepare for deliberation, the suggestion that you may want to pass both the automobile service station and self-storage facilities as a separate ordinance tonight. Because we could read, if we read, if I read that by full text, it would go into effect about thirty days faster. And, and you know, we could have, we could have a proposal for those at any day. So I think it'd be good for me to disclose that before we turn to public testimony. So we don't have any written correspondence on the file. And, and I think the next step would be if we have any requests to speak. Hector, do we get any requests on this topic? Kind of did not. And so Mayor, I think I should turn it back to you to close the hearing and, and open deliberations.
Okay, so at this time, seven thirty-two, we'll close the public hearing. And if there's no comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, if I, if I may, I will start with you. Counsel, what the, the ordinance will be if it were to be read by full text tonight to address the automobile service station.
So that would be the one that is nine ninety, right? Twenty twenty-five dash nine ninety?
Correct.
Just a point of clarification.
Counselor Byers?
In this instance with ordinance twenty twenty-five nine ninety, would we be reading both ordinances then tonight?
The staff is encouraging you to consider a couple possibilities. So one would be to read. I think if you did want to move more quickly, our staff suggestion would be to pass the ordinance by full text that I just distributed. And then when you made a motion to pass or to introduce by first reading, the larger ordinance to make clear that it's excluding those items that you just included in the first ordinance. So there, there, otherwise there would be duplication. But I think, I don't think there is necessary for, because the second title, the second ordinance that's being introduced for a first reading would only be read by title. So I, I don't think that would be an overly complicated motion. Just to be clear, council does have another route that would achieve very similar ends. And that would be to pass, just do a first reading tonight. And then on September third, you could pass an emergency ordinance putting the, those, those automobile service and self-storage changes into effect immediately. So the time
What would be the grounds of the emergency?
I, I think there, I think it's arguable, but my understanding is the case law provides you wide leeway to determine that.
Counselor Byers?
I'm ready with the motion.
Counselor Byers?
I move to adopt by reading in full and then by title only ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine ninety dash O.
So are we doing nine ninety before we're doing nine eighty-nine?
That would be my recommendation for, for clarity.
So we have a motion and a sec, is there a second?
Next second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt by reading in full and then by title only ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine nine zero dash O. Any discussion? Counselor Panomera?
Yeah, I'm still trying to, and sorry, I did read all the other stuff. I, I'm just still trying to make sure I understand what, you know, where, where the, this is, this is staff's, this is all staff stuff. Is there any planning, anything in what we're about to read that the planning commission disagreed with?
No, this is entirely the, yes, this is, this all reflects planning.
This is when you're in complete agreement, then I'm fine with. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Mayor, I, I'd be happy to if you'd like. The City of Talent ordains as follows. Section one findings, the City of Talent hereby adopts the findings as set forth in the whereas clauses in the staff report and the planning commission order in support of the proposed amendments to Talent Municipal Code. Section two amendment to Title eighteen, section eighteen fifteen, general definitions. Add self-service storage facility means a commercial establishment that provides individual secured units or spaces available for lease or rent to individuals and businesses for the storage of personal or business goods. These units are typically accessible directly by the lessy and are designed for non-hazardous, non-commercial use. Section three amendment to Title eighteen, section eighteen dot five five, commercial zone, highway central business district. Subsection eighteen dot five five dot zero five zero, buildings and uses subject to conditional use review. Strike A automobile service stations. Section four amendments to Title eighteen, section eighteen dot six zero, commercial zone highway in subsection eighteen dot six zero dot zero three zero, buildings and uses subject to type two site development plan review. Strike J automobile service stations in subsection K, strike storage buildings for household goods and private vehicles. Add replacement language in subsection K, self-storage facilities when enclosed within a building and on an upper story. In subsection eighteen dot six zero dot zero five zero, buildings and uses subject to conditional use review. Add T automobile service stations. Section five amendments to Title eighteen, section eighteen dot one five five, conditional use permit. Eighteen point one five five dot zero seven zero, special standards governing conditional uses. In G standards for automobile service stations, automobile wrecking yards and contractor offices and storage yards. Add a new section, sentence at the end of subsection three. The front setback must be landscaped and include design elements that enhance the pedestrian environment such as low shrubs, ornamental grasses, street trees, decorative paving, lighting or integrated public art. Seating areas are not required. Landscaping must be designed to provide visual interest and a clear delineation between pedestrian and vehicular areas. Add a new subsection nine, nine automobile service stations use, use, automobile service station uses must be located a minimum of two thousand feet from any other automobile service station use. Section six, all unamended provisions of Title eighteen zoning shall remain in full force and effect. Section seven, this ordinance will take effect on September sixth, two thousand twenty-five pursuant to unanimous city council approval and a reading in full and then by title on August sixth, duly enacted by city council in open session on August sixth by the following vote.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Sorry, can I ask a question? So, so Alex, you don't have to read the whereas and all that stuff for this to be legal?
No, I advised him that those are not the operating parts of the ordinance, so they're not necessary to be read.
I think, I, I think we do need to read by title, but
We need to read the title.
So maybe I should do that before the vote. So the title of ordinance number twenty twenty-five nine ninety dash O is an ordinance amending Talent Municipal Code Title eighteen, Talent Zoning Code, including chapters eighteen point fifteen, definitions eighteen point fifty-five, commercial zone, highway central business district, CBH, eighteen point sixty, commercial zone highway, CH, and eighteen point one five five, conditional use permit, CUP, and making findings in support of those amendments.
Okay, roll call please.
Counselor Panomera?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Pestejo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. This next one, if, for a motion, we would actually be removing these two items from to avoid redundancy.
Yes, I, I, yeah, I think just adding the line at the, at the end, accepting those items in ordinance to two thousand twenty-five to ninety would be sufficient to clarify.
And then what page is the motion on?
Ten of the packet.
Point of clarification.
Counselor Byers?
No, it's answered here. Thank you. I'm ready with the motion.
Okay, one moment. Oh, great. So my packet, my paper packet was organized, part of it was upside down. So give me a second to find the motion. All right. Counselor Byers?
Okay. I move to introduce for a first reading by title only ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine eight nine dash O. An ordinance amending Talent Municipal Code Title eighteen, Talent Zoning Code, including chapters eighteen point one five definitions, eighteen point five five, commercial zone, highway central business district, CBH, eighteen point six zero, commercial zone highway, CH, eighteen point eight five, overlay zone, natural areas, parks and floodplains, eighteen point nine five, residential lot improvement standards, eighteen point one one five, development and design standards, and eighteen point one five five, conditional use permit, CUP, and making findings in support of those amendments, excluding items introduced in ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine nine zero dash O.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to introduce for a first reading by title only ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine eight nine dash O. An ordinance amending Talent Municipal Code Title eighteen, Talent Zoning Code, including chapter eighteen point five definitions, eighteen point five five, commercial zone, highway central business district, CH, CBH, eighteen point six zero, commercial zone, highway CH, eighteen point eight five, overlay zone, natural areas, parks and floodplains, eighteen point nine five, residential lot improvements, eighteen point one one five, development and design standards, and eighteen point one five five, conditional use permits, CUP, and making findings to, findings in support of those amendments excluding the items introduced in twenty twenty-five dash nine nine zero, nine nine zero dash O. Is there any deliberation? Counsel Panomera?
Yeah, same question as before. I just want to check with the ex officios as well. So the, the, I think everything that the planning commission raised, my understanding, and this is a question for you too, Alex, was basically handled except that, except for the idea of the orientation. Is that?
So the, the language attached to the ordinance as presented is the language recommended by planning commission.
Including the orientation that, well, that, hmm, which staff doesn't agree with?
Staff has some concerns that maybe, maybe, maybe be rigid.
Okay, so where is that in the ordinance? It's gonna be blue, right? Blue highlight?
Well, that, so the page thirty-nine has it as, as planning commission would have it. Page page twenty of the packet has the language. Page twenty going on to page twenty-one has the language as proposed by staff to planning commission with the blue hiding, highlighting on the language that planning commission remained, recommended excluding.
Okay, so I found the blue one. Okay, so that's building orientation?
Correct.
Okay, so it says planning commission recommended striking the highlighted language.
Correct. Uh, which is, what, so, um, just to clarify process wise, I think if there were no amendments to, to the, um, to the motion. Um, the planning commission elimination of this language would be the, the default. That is, that is what has been, that is, the motion on the floor, uh, follows the planning commission recommendation to strike this language.
In other words, you'd have to agree with staff to, and I mean, if you agree with staff, you would be amending this motion.
Yeah, I got that. Um, so I'm wondering if we could talk about it. Yeah, so, um, when we say facing the street, does it mean like, you know, not, not one degree left, we're not one degree right? Is that pretty much?
I think, I think that's the general interpretation, yes.
I mean, I understand, you know, wanting better aesthetics, but I don't want to. Uh, you know, for example, what was built, you know, the age plus, uh, thing that was just built on ninety-nine. I think is at an angle. Um, the, all the residences are at an angle. I, I don't, would that satisfy this if, as strictly interpreted?
So, uh, the age plus, uh, development would not, would not meet this code. Um, the, the exist, the reason, and it only meets the existing code because it is far enough back from the back of curb. Um, and that was, um, and it's a combination of factors, including the fact that, um, that, uh, that it's affordable housing within the commercial zone ended up with that situation. I, I actually, please, strike that. Uh, the, the, that development would not be allowed under this new code. Um, it, it, it does meet existing code. Um, and, uh, there was some concern by, by the planning commissioner that perhaps it didn't meet the existing code, but we, we both clarified that due to the distance from the right of way, it actually does meet existing code. The existing code orientation requirement is only uh, for entrances within a certain distance of the, of the highway.
So if I'll just, just follow up, uh, I mean, my comment is, I think, you know, planning commission does have a better sense of aesthetics than I do. I'll say that. But on the other hand, I don't really want to, you know, uh, create something that's so strict. Um, that, you know, something that would be perfectly acceptable and creative and attractive. Uh, couldn't, couldn't be built. So I'm, I'm kind of, I'm a little bit. I'm, I'm gonna ask, uh, the ex officios or anybody else if they, if they can, um, I guess, make the case for the planning commission.
Well, I was the only ex officio there. Uh, Dave, were you there? I just want to verify my memory is correct.
Um, I don't think for this specific discussion, I, there, I was there, I think for preliminary, but I was away for a while when I think most of this discussion happened.
Okay. Uh, well, I, I, I think what I'll do is just deliberate my perspective. Um, I, I, if there were a split vote, I would uphold the current language. And I, while I understand
Which is that?
Which is what, what is on, what is on the motion, what is in the motion.
Okay.
Um, and I do understand, um, the desire to create more flexible, um, building code. But the, along the highway ninety-nine, um, there is examples of where where buildings that are oriented away from the highway, um, are are not appealing and, um, and the fix could be reorientating beating buildings, or it could be creating an entrance where, uh, there might not be traditionally an entrance on the building, for example, on the side of a building or, um, but we're seeing more and more development. Um, for example, the church that's on the corner of highway ninety-nine and rap road where the, both the side and the back of the church is oriented to the public view. And, um, so uh, while I, uh, appreciate that this ordinance would add expense, um, to a project. Uh, most of the projects on the highway are, are large enough where I think those expenses could be, um, mitigated or absorbed. Um, so, yep, if it were to come to us to vote, I would support the planning commission's, um, view.
Mayor, if I may clarify that, the, um, code language does say a primary entrance facing the street. So I'm not sure that adding a side door, for instance, to the, to the residences at two ten North Pacific would necessarily meet that.
Yeah, I, I don't think I, I, I didn't mean to describe it as a side door. Um, I, but an entrance on the side rather than, or, or just reor, or just reorienting the project itself, you know, so um, I, I, I do agree that it, um, it's, uh, the development that's happening around ninety-nine is, is not welcoming or appealing. Because, uh, because this, because of this particular issue. And I know it adds cost and it may ask the developer to rework the project a little bit, but I think that's an acceptable. Uh, yeah, an acceptable standard.
Mayor, if I, if I may address that point specifically, I, I don't
I, I appreciate it, Alex, and I'm gonna, uh, uh, what I would rather do rather than engage in a repartee is I'd rather, um, just have you state your position, and I've stated mine and will ask, uh, but I don't want to engage in a back and forth.
Uh, if I could just clarify, this staff's objection to this language is not a cost of, related to the cost of construction.
I appreciate that. Any other deliberation?
Another question?
Sure.
Yeah, was that the, um, so that was the only one that was, uh, that staff still objected to?
Ye- yes, there, there are no disagreements between staff and can plan permission was proposed, other.
I'll just say, I, I appreciated that, um, explanation. Thank you. All right, hearing none. Are there any amendments? All right. No further deliberation, roll call please.
Counselor Penamara?
Yes.
Counselor Medina? Counselor Pestejo?
No.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. And I apologize, uh, Alex, if I sounded curt. It was not my intention. It just came out that way. Uh, it was a, it was an accident of my tone more than anything else.
Not at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, um, item number six, which is the city managers and departments reports, and it is now seven fifty-five. Um, so I, uh, I just want to keep us aware of the time as we move forward.
Thank you. I'll keep this very, uh, short. Um, first item I just wanted to bring is, I, I did reach out to RVTD. Um, they didn't have, uh, regarding upcoming discussions about transit funding. They didn't have any particular recommendation that they provided me in terms of language, but I, I think, uh, I would like to request uh, council's approval if we do, if I do receive a request for support of, uh, transit funding in the upcoming emergency session, that, uh, I'd be able to provide that and uh, share that with you all at a later date, if that is your pleasure.
Counselor Penamara?
Well, I think the point is to, to get some, a letter from the city to the legislature by August twenty-ninth, so we won't be meeting before then.
Cool.
So I'm not sure what you meant by.
Uh, that I, that, uh, if you, if you give me that direction now.
Yeah.
Um, I would be free to craft that letter once I get information from RVTD about what particular they might, when and where it would be most helpful.
You'd go ahead and do it. No, that's great. Okay, I misunderstood. Thanks.
That
Yeah, if there are no objections, that, that works for, for me.
Any objections?
Great.
Great.
Um, and then I did also want to share with you all, there is a CIS um, grant opportunity that is coming up between now and September third. Um, there are grants for up to ten thousand dollars for wildfire risk management. Just found out about it this week. Um, it's, it's up to ten thousand dollars. Um, my thought would, we would, might apply for, um, roof. Uh, new roof materials for historic town hall. That could be a contribution towards the cost of, I, what I understand to be the next priority for historic town hall. Um, so I wanted to see if there's need for any further, you know, if that, if that seemed, uh, reasonable to council.
Any objections? No, uh, just, but, uh, will we have an opportunity to look at the grant application or the grant before it gets submitted?
Um, I believe the, the deadline is before September third.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think, uh, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it would be, um, serial meeting for me to provide it to all of council. And you could provide feedback directly to me if you had comments on, on it.
And that would be fine as long as you're not, you're not sharing comment with a, with other, with, with the councilman, with different council members, or they're not sharing their comments with other council members.
Great, so no reply all and no talking amongst each other, just directly with the city manager if we have comments.
Yep.
That'd be appreciated.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and then the only other thing that I wanted to mention is the, uh, Historic Town Hall Work Group that does advise the city manager directly, um, is planned to meet on August fourteenth to talk about next steps on Historic Town Hall.
Yep, great. Any other? Yeah, one more time, Alex, I want to apologize for my comment. Here's why. Not just for the tone, but also there are times where, where follow-up comments from each other happen all the time. And I I just had a moment of losing my patience. And I apologize for that because that's all it was, was losing my patience. It wasn't fair. And I want to apologize on the record.
I, I appreciate it. I thank you. And, and I think it's certainly possible that my next, uh, comment could have been argumentative thing. So, uh, you know, fair enough.
She's really annoyed with me.
Yeah.
Looking at like you.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just didn't want to, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your grace. Um, all right, the next item on the agenda is item eight point one, which is the second reading of the transient lodging tax ordinance. Did I lose? Oh, did I lose the consent calendar? No big deal. We're not adopting minutes anymore, so, uh, yeah. Financial statement, what the heck. Um, check register, whatever. Uh, I'll entertain a motion unless anybody wants to pull something out for discussion. Uh, Counselor Byers is doing all the heavy lifting tonight. Let's do it.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Uh, motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those, uh, uh, roll, roll call please.
Uh, pardon me, who was the second?
Uh, Penamara.
Penamara, thank you, Counselor Penamara. Uh, Counselor Penamara?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Pestejo?
Yes.
Byers?
Yeah.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, item eight point one is the second reading of the transient lodging tax ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine eight eight dash O. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, this is just the second, well, this isn't just, but this is the second reading of, of, uh, an ordinance that, uh, you did the first reading of at the last meeting. Um, the only, uh, item that I would note is, uh, I made a clerical correction to the effective date. Um, I didn't give the full thirty days past the second reading, um, in the version that you did the first reading of. So that's been corrected to an effective date of October first.
Right, any comments or discuss, any comments or questions? Uh, Counselor Penamara?
I'll, I'll just say I did listen to the discussion on this and I, I think, uh, and I appreciated that. So thanks, everybody.
It's on page one twenty-three. Um, you know, my, my packet is, is out of order. So what I'm gonna do is take a second because I pulled the agenda up, but I didn't pull the packet up. And so I can't find anything. And it's driving me crazy and I'm looking like a fool.
What page is that on?
One twenty-three.
Okay.
All right. So if there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Penamara?
I move to adopt a second, by a second reading, uh, by title of ordinance number two oh two five nine eight eight dash O. Amending Talent Municipal Code Title Three Revenue and Finance, deleting section three dot oh five transient room tax and replacing it with section three dot oh five transient lodging tax. Updating code language and procedures and imposing a transient lodging tax of eleven percent.
Second, we have a motion and a second to adopt by a second reading by title only of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nine eight eight dash O. Amending Talent Municipal Code Title Three Revenue and Finance, deleting section three point zero five transient room tax and replacing it with section three point zero five transient lodging tax. Updating code language and procedures and imposing a transient lodge tax of eleven percent. Any, uh, further discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Penamara?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Pestejo?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is item eight point two preliminary talent community resource center tenant selection. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, uh, I wanted to just make a, a notation. The staff report due to a print, a setting a print area. We neglected to include the scoring for worthwhile talents application in the original packet. You have that in paper. This colored paper today. And Hector, I believe there's the, the packet online has that, uh, that, that correction. Thank you. So, um, so, uh, just with that out of the way, I'll, I'll review. As, uh, council, uh, directed, we've, uh, reached out to a number of organizations that we thought were potentially interested. And also, um, had networks, uh, of other organizations that might be potentially interested in providing services to, uh, talent residents from, uh, this forty-nine talent have uh, location, which we are getting very close to closing on. In fact, they were supposed to open escrow, but, uh, we haven't seen, the escrow's been opened. But, uh, we're about to put down our earnest money payment on the purchase of the building. Staff, uh, scored the, um, the uh, letters of interest against the criteria that, um, that, uh, council had provided us. Um, as I sat and listened to the, uh, the comments, uh, that you heard this evening, uh, to open the, the meeting. Um, I did reflect that perhaps the, um, serving directly particularly high need populations for rogue seniors should have been medium high rather than just medium. Um, but I think even notwithstanding that, it did appear to staff that, uh, the Tonic Talent Clinic and Rogue Community Health, uh, application was, uh, the strongest on the high priority factors. Um, I guess I should, I should step through the, those factors and explain how I came to the conclusions that we did, um, well, that Karen and I did as we scored these. So on, uh, serving directly particularly high need populations. Now, I thought all, all of these, just about all the applicants do, um, serve particularly high need oblique, uh, populations, um, with the exception of the Ashland Y, right, serves just a more general. With the exception of the Ashland Y, right, serves just a more general population. And the rogue seniors, I would probably put somewhere between Ashland Y and. A organization like Road Food Unites that has a very limited clientele. I felt that all of these applicants clear, you know, serve folks that do lack services in currently. In the city of talent. In terms of the space uses are compatible with efficient use of the building. I scored talent clinic and road community health as high and all the others as medium. Exclusively because Rogue Community Health and the Talent Clinic want to take the entire building. And that is. To me, the most efficient use of that space. It eliminates the need to have any shared space, any common area. And so that that was my reasoning. In terms of the record of financial stability, all I all I really considered was the length of time. That these organizations have been in place. It wasn't any attempt to ask, request financials or cash on hand or anything. These are just simply the fact that. Most of these applicants have been, you know, present and operating for 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 a number of years, if not decades in our community. And then the compatibility with the building's use as a resilience hub. You know, I scored everybody higher or medium slash high. And relied primarily on the council's. Statement at our last meeting, which I I memory serves me was primarily to evaluate that. That that compatibility in terms of whether the services offered would be particularly valuable and useful and important. In the case of a disaster. I think I should stop there and 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 see if there are questions about what's in the staff report.
I have a question. So Rogue Community Health. Are they, have they taken a position that if they don't get the whole space, they are not interested?
They they did not say that explicitly. But. And certainly something I could check with them. What what was clear from my first conversation with William was this building was on the small size. Of what they was really ideal for them. So. It it my my impression from. Yeah, from that discussion was that it would be it would be a challenge to. Fit in significantly. Small, you know. Less than 90%, less than 80% of the space. I I I'm fairly sure it would be a challenge. Anyway, I should stop there. I haven't asked the question exactly in that manner.
I have a couple of follow up questions if, go ahead, Alex, did you have something else?
Well, and it occurs to me something else that I meant to meant to say. In in as I set this up and I that I didn't say in the staff report, I think it would be great. I I would very much appreciate. More than just a simple, we choose this. We but a clarification of this would be ideal. This would be also acceptable. This, you know, might work. Because inevitably staff are going to be having conversations with folks. And so having an idea of not only what your first choice, but your second choice, I think would be. Very appropriate and and help move us forward.
I have a couple more questions if I may. Worthwhile Talent is looking for closet space for offering clothing and hygiene supplies. Their hygiene supply program is amazing. But my understanding has been in the past that worthwhile talent has been looking for space. For like secondhand sales. Are they proposing? Are they proposing? Do you know if they're proposing to sell clothing or to? I I ask that because in the past I've seen them provide clothing as part of the food program. So. I'm wondering if they're planning to still do that, or if they're looking for an opportunity to sell clothing. Yeah, I mean, but it sounds to me like. It's looking like maybe the closet space to store the clothes and then maybe put them out for sale during like. Like, are they? Yeah, I mean, the the hygiene supplies program is a is funded and then they supply. The hygiene supplies. For free. I'm just not certain. Having read previous or know knowing about previous plans. For a clothing store, what their intention here is to give away the clothes or sell the clothes.
And it's been a little while since I read their letter. So and it was a little bit unclear. To me, to be perfectly frank.
Counselor Medina.
So in their letter, it says that while our long term vision includes opening a low cost thrift store. Downtown at the home base, currently we are focused on launching smaller skill programs. That meet urgent needs and provide value to town to union right now. And then further on, they explained that. They would hope to have the same hours at the food pantry to access.
Yeah, and I saw that too. And then also I got an email. Over a different, different topic with Tammy Welder and but I it didn't clarify for me that. You know, if if this was going to be like the beginning of the retail, I could have just asked beforehand, but I. I didn't get to it. I mean, I I'm inclined, like personally, I'm inclined that if. You know, alongside of the food program, the food pantry program. To provide some space, maybe in the same space for them to store the hygiene products. And maybe not the clothes. Right, I just because for space. Purposes. But if there was space for clothes and she wasn't selling them. I I don't, I don't think I'd be opposed to that. And I didn't, you know. If if she was a lot, if if worthwhile talent was allowed to co-locate with. Rogue with with access talent pantry.
That was my thought as well.
Yeah. Yeah, there there would not be a need for any evaluation of their record of financial stability. And then my other question is. About the senior. The senior. Presentation tonight. It sounds to me like you're going to be going back and talking to applicants. They kept saying a small office, thousand square feet is not that small. 300 or 400 square feet is small in my mind.
Yeah.
I think Alex was trying to get your attention.
Well, I, yeah, I was curious to, I I interpreted that comment about small office being that's part of what. The the use, the senior center would hope to have there. Thank you, and apologies for.
Yeah, and I was gonna say probably if we're gonna, if we can, you can ask questions, but we probably should relax the rules. So Alex, here's here's my comment. About this. Is, well, my question, my first question is that. But we're still talking about having a a common space. Is that right? Unless it all goes to Rogue Community.
So. The with the staff. Recommendation was and Rogue Community Health hosts access food pantries in several of their locations and and. Express an interest in doing that at this location. So the staff recommendation was essentially to rent the building to Rogue Community Health. As a condition of that lease, be that they host the access food pantry. But really leave the details of figuring that out to those two parties. So at the, one of the things that we've learned since. Gary's original schema for the building is that one of the walls that was. Thought to be knocked down is lead lined. Because there's an x-ray room. But bottom line is, I think we we have sufficient funds, particularly if it is primarily Rogue Community Health. Occupying that space to to design it in a way that works really well for Rogue Community Health and. The food pantry, but to not necessarily. Predefine that. And and I guess I I would acknowledge that that is somewhat selfish. In terms of staff, thinking about staff time. That that is, you know, I I would certainly acknowledge that wasn't necessarily one of the criteria that you all provided us. I think it is, it's the spirit of it is reflected in the in the last. The last secondary criteria that the organizations have, you know, professional staff for for the city to work with. The it the interest behind that certainly being. Not trying to trying to avoid setting up a situation that absorbs an enormous amount of staff time. But. I think, not sure I answered your question.
You did. Well. I mean, I I I guess what I'm. My my questions are leading to trying to seek a way where. A small office could be provided to the senior group. I have sat in on some of the conversations with H plus and it does look like it's heading. In a direction that would create financial stability for their organization and staffing. And were that the case. This really is one of our greatest unmet needs in our community is serving the. Senior population. And. I would hope that we would be able to entertain that possibility. With Rogue Community Health. You know, there's another, it will be a non met need if that if that other clinic no longer. Continues to operate. And. So. I hope when you, I I guess what I'm asking for and if the council agrees is as you're entertaining conversations. If there could be. A provision for a small office for Rogue. Senior slash H plus. As part of that. Part of that configuration, it would. Certainly serve our community well.
My my raise a a a relevant item that I I haven't had an opportunity to share with council yet is that. Rogue Rogue Action has shared with us our their intention to vacate the Tura. Building. So there may, there may be the possibility. So I was happy to take your direction and if we're unsuccessful in that, there may be another city facility. That might might meet that need as well.
Counselor Penamra.
Well, I'm I'm gonna take a different track.
I think I think I, yeah, I mean, I think that's. Yeah. If we can just keep that. Conversation going, right? This isn't the final decision tonight. So, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I wanted to say that. I, you know, reading staff's report, the the decision made is is I agree with the reasoning. I'm, I really like Jackson Care Connect at all a lot. I'm I'm not familiar with the talent clinic. I've always thought of it as just another private entity. I I just reread their letter and what I I want to make sure, well, first of all, I want to say that, you know, the idea of helping folks that have Medicaid. Or who have just lost their Medicaid is going to be a big deal. You know, and to have that resource is for healthcare. You know, free, what I'm not just low barrier, but no barrier healthcare. In this community is a tremendous asset and I'm really in favor of that. I'm also say, I want to say that I like the, I think that it's a plus that it's. That it's simple to have, you know, a single tenant who can use the building like pretty much as is. Those are all efficiencies are always good. I I would, I want to make sure just reading the letter is talking, yes, we take Medicaid patients. Yes, we take Medicare patients. Well, so does everybody. I I what I want to make sure is that the the physicians that are, you know, the organization that is providing services here. These services are truly, you know, intended for low barrier folks and that will that will align with that mission. And that they're not just doing some of that work. But that's the, that's the main mission. So that's what I wanted to get some clarification on.
Counselor Medina.
I was gonna say the same thing, like what does low barrier mean? That sometimes they'll say low barrier, but it's really not.
Counselor Byers.
Well, to that point, I'm recalling a piece of written. Communication that we received from that individual that discussed. I I'm I'm like dredging this out of my memory. Either they have just formed a 501(c)(3) for a medical office. Or that is their intention to, and I would be curious about where they're at in that process and finding out a bit more about that.
Yeah, and I and also there was, you know, the about being in partnership with Jackson Care Connect, who who, as I understand, does have this mission. And I think Alex didn't use to, you worked for them recently.
Well, it's Rogue Community Health and Rogue Community Health.
Oh, sorry.
Submitted. A separate letter as well.
Okay, sorry about that.
Not seen. It may be that I failed. To. Package that correctly to put that in front of you. That but. Yes, so Rogue Community Health and the Talent Clinic. Are intending to partner and Rogue Community Health absolutely provides clear. I mean, I think, you know, clearly provides low and no barrier healthcare. So.
That's the main thing.
Exclusively. Is that right?
Exclusively.
Well, I there there are, I I can say definitively they're FQHC, which is a federally qualified healthcare clinic. That's the same thing that La Clinica is, that is, I mean, they they're they exist to be that safety net. Type access.
Okay.
So I, gosh, I really apologize that that letter's not there. That was certainly central to. My thinking. But.
But the the point of that letter was.
That this, that it that it would be. I think I don't want to misrepresent my, the way I read it was that that it was. This project would be. Under the RCH umbrella and operated. Essentially as an RCH facility, but it'd be essentially a joint venture where they're bringing. The providers that are currently the the Talent Clinic in as the primary providers.
Which as long as they're serving that that patient demographic, I'm fine with. If they're taking their. People on Aetna and Cigna, I'm I'm less interested.
I I hear you 100% in that. Sounds like that. That is clearly one of the things I need to confirm and and bring back to you.
Yeah, so the the, yeah, the patient, the patient profile and also, you know, being able to take people who are lost their Medicaid. That's that's going to be huge. So just my comments are, you know, healthcare and food are just essential kinds of things and and. There seems to be a really nice compatibility with those two things. I want Rogue seniors to have a. I want Rogue Seniors to have a home as well and a lot of these other really important places. But I, I don't, I kind of don't want to, I don't want to add a lot more than the building can comfortably handle because I think that would, you know, impact the, the services themselves if there's too much confusion. So I think that it's, it's a good idea for staff to ask the questions. I love the idea of that little house becoming a senior center or renting. That, that is just too adorable. So, because I've been in there and I think it'd be great.
With the attached other space, that's almost like a community, a little, I mean, Talent Maker City used to occupy the offices in the house and then hold workshops in that additional space that's on the property.
Okay, I'm not remembering that, but they also have a cute little yard in the right across corner from the, from the library. So
Counselor, Counselor Byers?
I just want, since you had said you're asking for it, I also feel like the highest priority would be the, with the necessary bedding established, the Talent Clinic and Rogue Community applicant with the caveat of seeing if there is space to accommodate the small closet that worthwhile talent outlined in their cover letter. I think it aligns so well with what Access would be doing with food distribution in that space.
I, I agree, and my, my comments were going to be that, that we see if Rogue Community would be willing to manage with them as well. But I, yeah, I would like to see that worthwhile. I, I agree with it if worthwhile is co-locating with Access and, and they're not selling clothes. So if they're providing free services and to that point, I, you know, if they're collating, co-locating with Access and they're not selling anything, then, then that space that's being provided to Access is at no charge. And if they're providing free supplies to, and free clothing, there's, I, I see that them having that same benefit that Access has, like, there's, there's no need to charge them in my mind unless they go to a model where they're selling products for fundraising. That I, I think requires more space and is a different proposition than we're offering the food distribution center. Counselor Byers?
It's my understanding from the cover letter in the packet that there's a real flexibility there, and it seems like this non-sales model is the first item broached with a solution for, for a potential issue that we've discussed in the past, should it. But it doesn't sound like that's needed since we've already got Access being discussed as a food distributor.
Yeah, as long as they're not taking up additional space.
Right, yeah, right. And I also, I didn't get to finish saying this. I also look forward to a future agenda item where we discuss the potential of homing Rogue Seniors in the, the Home Street House. I think that would be an excellent fit and use of that space.
Counselor Panamara?
Yeah. So, and the, just to follow up on the questions for Talent Clinic. So they, they're currently there, are there in Wagner Plaza, the practitioners, yeah. So, so, yeah, just, I'd like to know more, like, you know, what are they doing with their current practice? Are they going to keep that going? So all of these questions are just really to flesh out. Will the space be used six days a week, you know, regular hours, helping our low income folks, especially those who are falling through the cracks? That's what I'm at, and not, they're not going to be like, you know, half-staffed because they're at their other clinic as well, that kind of thing. Thanks.
I think I got just, just what I needed, unless there are additional comments.
No, but if that allows us to carry on then. Next item on the agenda is to initiate 9.1 and sheet the vacation of Culver Park right-of-way staff.
Thank you, Mayor. And Hector, have you, have you had the opportunity to elevate on to panelists? Thank you, Mayor. I have Ani Hunter with me. Ani is, was the primary author of this staff report. She is with RV cog and providing contract planning support to the, to the city. Since I'm here, I'll give the brief overview, but then pass the tough questions to Tony. The, the city as part of the annexation agreement that brought the Culver Road Park into the city, I think that was finalized in November of last year, included a commitment from, from the city to vacate the existing right, right-of-way that is at the far eastern edge of that property. It also committed the school district to dedicate future right-of-way to replace that right-of-way on a new alignment that is, that connects a little further away from the railroad crossing. So this, this change works for their layout, but was primarily driven by the city's interest in if that street is ever developed, we want, we need better spacing from the, the railroad crossing because you don't want queuing right at railroad crossings because that's a safety issue. So the action that's requested today from you all is to give staff permission and direction to move forward with provide, setting a date for a public hearing where staff would present findings, you all would hear any concerns from the public and hold a public hearing on said vacation of right-of-way and, and allow us to begin providing notice for that. With that, I would welcome questions.
Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Byers?
I move to initiate proceedings to vacate Wagner Creek Road right-of-way to enable the extension of Wagner Creek Road towards Foss Road as shown on the attached map exhibit A.
What page is that motion on?
Top of 160.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to initiate proceedings to vacate Wagner Creek Road right-of-way to enable the extension of Wagner Creek Road towards Foss Road as shown in the attached map exhibit A. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Panamara?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Pesteza?
Yes.
Or Byers?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Next, next item on the agenda is discussion of committee facility use, partnership and sponsorship. Counselor, I mean, sorry, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The not wanting to give this question short shrift because I think there are, there are interesting policy questions that the, the, the specific questions speak to. I do think in the interest of time and may, and maybe it'll be a good way to, to get to the, to the heart of the matter is to, to discuss the two specific issues that have come up recently. So one is that our consultant, who is a contractor who is working on the development of the Harvest Festival, received a question. So to city, city customer practices, I understand it has been to make booth space available to each of the city commissions and committees at the Harvest Festival at no cost. One of those, I believe, maybe a group that we've heard from this evening requested from one of our committees or commissions permission or an invitation to join them and to occupy that booth with them. And, and Anna, in her capacity, managing that project, I think, is seeking direction from council on how and if we want to regulate or how, how and if council would like to regulate those kinds of decisions. I think, I think to put it in a nutshell, there are, I think there are a couple, couple of ways that you all could go. You could leave that to their, their discretion. At the other end, you could require that those, those requests come to council. Or something in the middle might be to establish, you know, some criteria of types of organizations that are allowable and empower staff to approve those types of organizations to, to be offered that kind of use of what is essentially city space in some sense. So that's one question. And the related topic that came up recently, and it was just, it was, there was a, a difference of recollection or understanding, I think, understanding is probably the best sense word. When city committees with council approval hold an event, for instance, in this building, how, how do we want to account for that use? I think council's given us clear direction as staff that at a minimum, we want to, we'd want to include that in an accounting of city use of the space. So we, we understand what the value is. I think the, the other, the more, the other option would be to directly charge the $500 that the council makes available to each of those committees for rent, rental of city space. So while I stopped there, I'm sure there are questions for clarification.
Counselor Byers?
I'm so sorry. This question is for Dave. It's been a long day. I am wondering if this is a discussion I should recuse myself from, since I am the person who brought it up and am connected to it.
I do think at minimum, just disclosing, pending Dave's answer, disclosing you are the consultant for the record.
Yes, for the record, I am the consultant that is producing the Talent Harvest Festival on behalf of the city of Talent.
And I would, I would see your involvement as creating a potential conflict. The question is, do you get any financial, the question is to whether there's any actual conflict is do you get any more or less financial benefit depending on the answer that is made?
I do not.
And I don't think you do.
No, I don't.
So at most, it's a potential conflict.
Okay. Well, then I will say, I'm so sorry. I should have done this during the agenda item. I am declaring a potential conflict of interest because I am the producer of the Talent Harvest Festival.
Thank you, counselor. Right. Is there any other information from staff on this?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Well, I would entertain a motion and then we can just deliberate. And unless you have some comments that would suggest why we wouldn't make a motion, for example. I know there's several choices here. Counselor Panamara?
Yeah, I'll just say I do like both these motions. I do like the idea of there being some sort of criteria, but since we haven't developed the criteria yet, in lieu of that, I'm, I'm happy with the first motion. And I like both of them.
Counselor Byers?
Oh, I was just going to ask if it is appropriate or needed for me to provide any further context for the question that I posed to Alex regarding this.
If, if I may insert myself, I think if you pass one or both of these motions, I, I would like to pose to, to counsel the specific example that you raised, and perhaps we could address it tonight. If, if council needs to approve it, I think there's, there's one request that you should bring forward.
Shall I speak to that further now?
Yes, Counselor Byers?
Okay, so we have Together for Talent, who graciously, because it aligns with a lot of their work, opened their booth space to Rogue Seniors, which at least at that point in time was a grassroots community organization without a fiscal sponsor and completely run by volunteers to leverage the fact that Together for Talent had a booth space that was guaranteed and available to amplify the programming Rogue Seniors is offering and also to provide a senior respite area in the heart of the event. Which, while as an event coordinator, I might, I'm inclined to say that's fabulous. As a counselor, I recognize that it does set a precedent for any city entity, committee, commission to somehow amplify another organization. And to me, then that gets to the point where there needs to be some communication between said committees or commissions and the council before they move forward with that, just to keep everything as clear and transparent as possible and make sure that there is a process set for the future.
I, yeah, thank you for that additional context. I would, would encourage some additional language to this motion. As it's written, I wouldn't support it if there were a tie. But if, if it included language like invite another nonprofit organization that aligns with the committee mission. And I, I asked the council to consider that additional language because I, I believe that we have to walk a fine line between inviting discourse or, 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 you know, community I can't think of the right word here, but backlash over creating an opportunity for some abuses where, where we've made it clear many times that we support nonprofits that directly serve our community. And so nonprofit, nonprofit organizations that serve directly, serve our community directly. And, and the other criteria that I think could be built in at some other time, but could be mentioned in the, in the motion would be that align with the mission of the committee. So that, that provides us with some guardrails about, you know, committees and commissions maybe going far afield and asking, asking for, you know, a, a co-location of a booth or the, or, or any space really that belongs to the city. I mean, eventually, but in this case, I think we're only just dealing with the Harvest Festival. So those are my thoughts. And since I can't seek to amend the motion, I'm asking for counsel to consider my thoughts.
I'm ready with a motion, if you like.
Any other comments? Counselor, Counselor Panamara?
I move to require committees to seek concurrence from city council if and when they wish to invite another nonprofit organization that aligns with the committee mission to join them in a space provided by the city such as a Harvest Festival booth.
Is there a second?
Are you recusing a second? Or you just don't like it?
All right, we have a motion and a second to require committees to seek concurrence from city council if and when they wish to invite another nonprofit organization that aligns with their mission to join them in a space provided by the city such as a Harvest Festival booth. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Panamara?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Pesteza?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Quick question before we move on to the next motion. Would, is the timing such? When is the Harvest Festival again?
October 4th.
Okay, so they have time to seek that concurrence if they want to.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll entertain the next motion. If there's no more comments or questions, Counselor Byers?
I move to direct staff to waive cost recovery from council-approved committee-sponsored events in the Talent Community Center and maintain a record of those waived fees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to direct staff to waive cost recovery from council-approved committee-sponsored events in the Talent Community Center and maintain a record of those waived fees. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Panamara?
Yes.
Counselor Medina?
Yeah.
Counselor Pesteza?
Yes.
Byers.
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Quick question for you, Alex. Follow up on this is, is the city currently tracking the use of the community center by the city?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 9.3, which is approval of resolution 2025-125-r for housing assistance planning grant. Staff report.
Thank you, mayor. Members of the council, staff have, as we forewarned you, submitted an application to Department of Land Conservation Development for the amount was, I believe, 30 or $35,000 with all match being provided in kind, i.e. by staff, with staff time for assistance with revisions to development code to make it more clear and objective and consider places where we could provide more opportunities for housing and housing choice and also to prepare a, an urban growth boundary land exchange, particularly targeting TA5. Resolution or letter of support from the council is required for the application and staff is requesting a resolution for the record.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Panamara.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-125-r in support of a city application to Department of Land Conservation and Development for housing planning assistance grant funding.
We have, thank you. That was Counselor Byers for the second. My apologies for talking over you. So we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-125-r in support of a city application to Department of Land Conservation and Development for housing planning assistance grant funding. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Counselor Panamara.
Yes.
Counselor Medina.
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is 9.3, 9.4, an amendment to the Osland Group Historic Town Hall contract staff.
Thank you, mayor and members of the council. We've, we're actually going back sort of full circle on this, on this contract. So the contract originally included this 1927 foundation work at the Historic Town Hall. We eliminated it because the overall cost of the project exceeded the ARPA monies that we had dedicated to it. Staff have since been able to secure a grant to cover most of that difference. And now we are requesting council's permission to add that element back to the contract, increasing the total not to exceed to $280,000.
Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Byers.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the Osland Group contract for construction services for the Historic Town Hall Foundation with a new not to exceed amount of $280,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the Osland Group contract for construction services for the Historic Town Hall Foundation with a new not to exceed amount of $280,000. Any deliberation? Hearing none, roll call please.
Yes.
Counselor Medina.
Yeah.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is 9.5, first reading of ordinance 2025-990. It's, did I skip an item? Did you say something?
No, Hector, Hector, we may want to use a different ordinance number.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, because we have 990. You want to change it to 991? Okay, let the record show that we've changed the, pardon me, let the record show that we changed nine point, agenda item 9.5, 9.5 to ordinance number 2025-992-0. So item number 9.5, first reading of ordinance 2025-992-0 to allow utility billing fees and charges to be updated by resolution. Staff?
Thank you, mayor. This is primarily, I believe, a cleanup item. The ordinance 2016-910 established a lot of the code that governs our municipal water system. At that time, there were several fees that were included in that ordinance, and so they have been included in the, in the municipal code. But I think this council having the flexibility to change those fees by resolution would make it a lot more easy to update those fees for inflation annually, as I believe is our, our plan. So I'm requesting an ordinance to, to change municipal code to that effect.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Panamara.
I move to introduce for a first reading ordinance number 2025-992-0 by title only, amending Title 13 Public Utilities and Services, Chapter 13.05 Water Systems Rules and Regulations and providing city council the authority to set miscellaneous water utility rates by resolution.
Second. I have a quick question about this motion. Why are we providing city council the authority to set miscellaneous water fees by resolution? Why isn't it the city? Why, why do we have to do that? Why do we have to provide ourselves permission to set miscellaneous water fees by resolution?
Well, it is, is distinguishing from the fact that you have previously provided it by ordinance.
Okay, that's, that's it. That's, that was the extent of my question. We have a motion and a second to introduce for a first reading ordinance number 2025-990, excuse me, 992-0 by title only, amending Title 13 Public Utilities and Services, Chapter 13.05 Water System Rules and Regulations and providing city council the authority to set miscellaneous water utility fees by resolution. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Panamara.
Yes.
Counselor Medina.
Yeah.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Yes. Now we see Hector's, the method of your madness for taking us to 992. Because this is a 9.6, first reading of ordinance 2025-991-0 to update ITE manual edition and approval of resolution 2025-126-r to update system development charges for inflation. Staff?
Thank you, mayor and council. So there are two, two actions requested here, both related to system development charges. We have the ability, you have the ability to update system development charges for inflation by resolution only. And it's been some time since the March of 22, since that was done. So I'm requesting that you increase all system development charges by 5.44%, which is the Engineering News Records Seattle Cost Construction Cost Index change since that time. And we also use the International Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual to calculate the transportation system development charge. The result, for, for, I guess clarity, the good practice is to not name current edition as in, in city code. So we do need to update which edition that we're using. So there's a request in ordinance to update the addition to the 11th edition.
Any questions or comments, Counselor Panamara?
Just to, if you, do you have a back of the envelope guesstimate as to how much more this will bring the city, the, the 5.4 whatever percent? Just to put you on the spot with the math question.
I mean, I, I don't, it's a few, it, we raise a few hundred thousand dollars a year in system development charges in a good year, you know, maybe north of 500,000. So it's, we're talking about ten, a few, potentially a few tens of thousands.
So not nothing. Thanks.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Panamara.
I move to adopt resolution number 2025-126, updating City of Talent System Development Charges for Inflation.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 2025-126, updating City of Talent System Development Charges for Inflation. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Panamara.
Yes.
Counselor Medina.
Yeah.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
I'll entertain another motion. Counselor Panamara.
I move to introduce for a first reading ordinance number 2025-991-0 by title only, amending Title 13 Public Utilities and Services, Chapter 13.40, Methodology for Transportation SDC to use the current edition of the Institute for Transportation Engineers Manual. 11th edition?
Did you, was I supposed to say current or something else?
The, the ordinance specifies the 11th edition, the title just says current.
So the motion is okay?
The motion was fine.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to introduce for a first reading ordinance number 2025-991-0 by title only, amending Title 13 Public Utilities and Services, Chapter 13.40, Methodology for Transportation SDCs to use the current edition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Panamara.
Yes.
Counselor Medina.
Yeah.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Item number nine, thank you, Hector. 9.7 is approval of the mural artwork on museum buildings. Staff?
Thank you, mayor. And I hesitate to, to say too much about this item since there are several folks in this room who know much more about it than I do. But the Talent Public Art Committee has requested council approve the addition of some new murals to the exterior of the building that Talent Historical Society occupies. I understand this is grant, grant-funded work that is being shepherded through the coalition that is our stories through art and is being recommended to you, as I said, by the Talent Public Arts Commission.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Byers.
I move to direct staff to, acting as the property manager of the building on behalf of the city, approve the painting of up to six four-foot by eight-foot murals depicting local fauna and flora on the city-owned building at 105 North Market Street.
Second. We have a motion and a second to direct staff to acting as the property manager, manager of the building on behalf of the city, approve the painting of up to six four-foot by eight-foot murals depicting local fauna and flora on the city-owned building at 105 North Market Street. Before we move forward in reading this motion, my understanding is that the plan is to affix four murals to the building. Does it matter? Does this motion matter if that's the case?
Thank you, mayor. I think, I think, I think you're probably right. The amendment to, to make it more general would, would be better.
And to leave it the way it is?
Sorry, an amendment to make it slightly more general to just approve. You can just take the painting of out, just to approve up to six four-foot by.
So I'll entertain a withdraw of the motion or an amendment. Counselor Byers.
I withdraw my first motion.
Is that okay with the second? That's okay. Yep. Thank you very much. Counselor, Counselor. Counselor Byers.
I move to direct staff to, acting as the property manager of the building on behalf of the city, approve up to six four-foot by eight-foot murals depicting local fauna and flora on the city-owned building at 105 North Market Street.
Second. We have a motion and a second to direct staff acting as the property manager of the building on behalf of the city to approve up to six four-foot by eight-foot murals depicting local flora and, local fauna and flora on the city-owned building at 105 North Market Street. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Counselor Panamara.
Yes.
Counselor Medina.
Yeah.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you, Hector. 9.8 is approval to declare surplus of musical sculpture and donate it to Talent Maker City. Staff?
Thank you, mayor. I honestly, it's a little unclear to me whether this, who, who owns this piece of art in the first place as, as the, this, but is clearly in the possession of the city at this point. And so the, and is not being displayed. So the motion doesn't actually address the, the ownership of the, of the piece of art, but just would direct staff to allow Talent Maker City to steward and display the art.
I just want to ask, are you preparing a motion?
No, I can speak to that.
Counselor Byers.
So just the background of this, TMC made this interactive musical sculpture. It was actually a high school student, as it says here, and then they requested, they went through all the appropriate channels, as it says here, to work with Parks and Recreation Commission and then Public Works Staff to install that sculpture in Commons Park. But there was no official, like, gifting of to the city, just establishing ownership of if, if we're doing that. TMC purchased all the materials and it was the labor of their volunteer that created it.
Thank you. And, and so I, I meant, I intentionally, I, I thought that was entirely possible.
Yeah.
So I didn't want to imply that we were giving it back to them if they had never given it to us, but just make sure that we're, we're, we're giving them possession of, of this item.
I want to add some comments. For the purpose of all public art, I think it's important to recognize that the, I have absolutely no objection with the disposition of this art. I want to make that clear upfront. But for the purpose of all of our publicly owned art, which most of it was donated or, or installed without, without a MOU that states this is a donation. For example, the statue of the skate, skateboard in front of the skate park. Once, my understanding is that, you know, if it's, if it's installed on public property, it becomes the property of, of the city and, and, and the importance of that is just to maintain continuity and how public art is disposed of moving forward. Because I don't think all, all art pieces should go back to their originators. The skateboard sculpture is a perfect example of that. Again, I, I have no objections to this. I think this is the perfect use and certainly their intended use to display it at Talent Maker City is such a great opportunity for this to be reunited with the community. But I do think that arguably, if it's affixed to city property, it becomes the property of the city, but I do think we need a policy about that. And I've asked the Talent Public Arts Committee for that, and I think they're working on it, but if there's any support staff can give with some draft language to get that moving along, because there's more of this coming with some funds for art and that will be affixed to public property and and I think the details of who takes care of it and all that kind of stuff needs to be sorted out in a policy. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Byers.
I move to direct staff to deliver the irrigation pipe musical instrument to Talent Maker City for the purposes of displaying the art.
Second. We have a motion and a second to direct staff to deliver irrigation pipe musical instruments to Talent Maker City for the purpose of displaying the art. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Counselor Panamara.
Yes.
Counselor Medina.
Yeah.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Byers.
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is item number, I just want to make one last comment. I think it's important for us to just say for the record that that does not, that, 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 that there should not be any understanding that art that's installed on the city, city property, it could be, can be just claimed. So I, you know, I just think that So I, you know, I just think that, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to do that, but I think that until we have a policy, we should maintain the understanding that if it's on the city property, the city has something to say about it. All right, thanks. 9.9 is approval of resolution 2025-127-R, the Local Government Investment Pool Personnel. Staff?
This resolution would authorize myself as your city manager, Pro Tem and the Finance Director to manage funds in the local government investment pool, which is our primary location where city, city financial reserves are held.
Any questions? We'll entertain a motion. Councilor Penamrath?
I move to adopt resolution number 2025-127-R, authorizing city manager Pro Tem Alex Campbell and Finance Director Dana Mason to manage city funds through the local government investment pool.
Second, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 2025-127-R, authorizing city manager Pro Tem Alex Campbell and Finance Director Dana Mason to manage city funds through the local government investment pool. Is there any further discussion? Roll call please.
Councilor Penamrath?
Yes.
Councilor Medina?
Yeah.
Councilor Prestizo?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Item number 11.
Sorry, Mayor?
Yeah?
I was wondering if we could just take a three-minute break?
Well, what first, if we're going to continue, I need a motion to continue. Is it, oh wait, we do at 9:30, right?
Yeah, 9:30, it's only 9:08.
Planning Commission is 9:00.
It's been two and a half hours, almost two and a half hours.
Uh, let's take a five-minute break.
He gave me a can of water.
Yeah, I know. Sorry, sorry. Yeah, it's my, it's a plan, it's a plan.
You were always drinking water.
So now we are calling this meeting back to order at 9:16 and we are at other business and future.
Committee and Commission.
What's that?
Number 10, Committee and Commission.
Oh, Committee and Commission reports, thanks, thanks.
Of which I have none.
Oh, I have one. I have a couple, but I know we're short on time, so I'll do the one that's the most.
Okay, Councilor Medina?
Yeah, so Friends for Talent is holding an emergency workshop from 1:00 to 3:00 on September 6th at the Town Library. The first one was very successful and they were asked to do another one. And then they think that the only kind of support they'll need is like for printing material for the workshop. So that is happening, so put that on your calendar. And then there's also this wonderful event that is going to happen in November, but it's going to take me like at least five minutes to explain it. So I can explain it at the next council meeting, but it is going to be awesome.
I want to, I want to hear it.
Oh yeah, you have time.
Okay, okay, I'll have that.
So this is all Shane's idea, he's on the committee, it's the working titles embody the future workshop. And it's taken from a model up in Portland, I believe, but what it is in a nutshell, it's like a multi-generational workshop focusing on planning for the needs of future generations. So it's like not of like, what do we benefit right now or Band-Aid or anything like that, but really thinking of what steps we can take now, so like our grandkids can inherit a talent that we all want. And so this particular workshop, what we're thinking at the moment, it's just kind of like in regards to climate and being good stewards to the environment and what steps would we need to take now so our grandkids can have an awesome environment and talent.
That's.
Yeah, and we're hoping to host it here at the community center and. Well, I guess that's in taking.
Can I ask a question about that? So is this, is this the one where role-playing is involved?
I know that scenarios are involved, like they pitch different kind of scenarios, but I don't know if it's like straight-up role-playing.
Okay, it's with this other group, elders?
Yeah.
Action Network?
Yeah, yeah. It sounds really, I'm really.
So cool. Thank you for explaining that, because it's, it was, it has been explained to me, but not as well as you did just now, so thank you, that was really good.
Councilor Penamrath?
Yeah, all I've got is, as I already sent in an email, the RVNPO, Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization that doles out federal money, awarded ODOT and the City of Talent $774,000 to do the Creel Bear Creek Greenway Connection. So that'll be a walkway, for folks who don't know, that's basically adjusting the sidewalks and everything so people can walk from south of Talent to the Greenway without risking their lives.
Yay. I have a report from planning, but I don't need to give it to you because you all just acted on it. It's, there was nothing more than that, really. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to other business and future agenda items. Review, does anybody have any other before we review the look ahead? Councilor Penamrath?
Can I, I just want to say about the Rogue seniors. Those, they're just so dedicated and they're showing up everywhere and they've got their heart and soul invested in this and they're very smart. So I'm, I, I love the idea of there's any way to make it happen, then, you know, like using Home Street. And maybe they could share it with another nonprofit that's, that's aligned, because I think that is the coolest, most, that's coolest thing. Oh, and doing, sorry, one question, do we know where the rack's going? Or they're, well, they're currently sharing it with Phoenix, they're in Phoenix, right?
I suspect they're consolidated.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Do we know when?
We, we may, but I, I don't like that this moment.
Okay.
You can steal that from him, that's good. It may be known, it's not to me.
Okay, look ahead.
Thank you, and if I could just seek clarification from, from council. The emergency prep workshop that Together for Talent has done previously, I'm confident that, that you all have approved before and you're comfortable with again. As far as this embodied future workshop, should we be bringing back some additional, more detail for, for council to sign off on it? Or is like that level of discussion today sufficient?
So, so about.
Do you all need to have another discussion about this embody the future workshop with some more detail? Or was that the discussion that you just had sufficient information for council about that?
Do we need to approve it? I think we've been approving, have we been approving workshops that Together for Talent has been doing? We did the last one, I think.
Yeah. And I think it was just because it was.
Oh, emergency.
It was because it was emergency preparedness and it had, you know, some, some consequential type stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, but. Councilor Byers?
But we have time, perhaps they should send a request for approval to us for our first September meeting. It's not till November and then we can just stay consistent.
Yeah, I mean, I would actually love a little five-minute presentation, because it is such a cool idea. I think it'd be great to learn a little bit more about it if they're, if they're up for it.
Great. So you have a look ahead in front of you and we'll add that embodied the future as a new business item. And we'll give Hector and I a chance to try out talking about a sort of questionnaire, so we can regularly ask the same questions and ensure we're collecting the right information about these kinds of things.
Nice.
And I have tentatively scheduled this discussion about electrification and energy element that Councilor Penamrath has suggested. A study session. Regular meeting items, Department head report would be to give you all a final report on the OWEB project. We do have access now to the, to the data layer and I think that's been published on the website. Hector, in my right, we've got the, you have, we do now have the map up on the website of where those more or less a thousand trees have been planted and we'll give council a bit more information than that. You, council did first reading of several ordinances tonight, then we'd have second ordinances on. Conceivably, I might have a design build contract to present to you, although it seems probably overly optimistic that I would be ready to present to you, so that's probably by September 17th at the earliest. But we definitely are planning to return to the Gateway RFP conversation that we had some extensive conversation about tonight. And, and there's been a request to discuss the, the development to develop the director position and the possibility or what would need to happen in order to establish that position at the City of Talent.
Councilor, do you have one?
Well, if there, before I talk about September 17th.
Councilor Penamrath?
Thanks. Do you know, have you already approached Rogue Climate about participating in the study session?
I have not, so I'm, I'm glad to be reminded by going through this of, of these events, because no, I haven't taken any steps to set that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there'll be somebody available. I was thinking that might be another 5:30 start if there were, if we had Rogue Climate and other people there. I think worst cases, if it doesn't take an hour, we can take a walk or something. So that's my request to start the study session at 5:30 PM unless.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be good. What's the date of that?
Sup for the September 3rd meeting? The electrification study session. The electrification study session.
Three minutes, should we move to extend?
Yeah. What?
I move to extend the meeting as needed until 10:00 PM.
Second, we have a motion and a second to extend the meeting as needed until 10:00 PM. Any discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Byers? Counselor Medina.
Yeah.
Counselor Penemiro.
Yes.
And Counselor Pestejo.
Here. Pestejo has left the building. Dave?
Maybe he thought when he took a break, he adjourned.
Are we, uh, is he online?
I don't see him.
I don't see Counselor Pestejo.
Dave?
Forum.
Uh, we're, 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 uh, without a forum, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 6:27, uh, 9:27.
Well, I mean, it's not like we've got enough down.
Yeah, we didn't. We didn't make any decisions without him. All right, I'm going to take my, crank you back home.
Do you remind me, do you remember the name of the city action staffer you suggested?
Chad Woodward.
Thank.
And I think he's, yeah, I think.